A 150th birthday bash looks like.
Man, man, I'll heal double toe signal.
You might think you're at an old time square dance hootenanny at some New England mansion, and you'd be somewhat correct.
My neck with the quarter turn, stop step, stop step.
Cowgirls and cowboys of all stripes got in a little line dancing action to help celebrate the 150th anniversary of the very New England-style Banning Museum in Wilmington, formerly the Banning family home.
I gotta tell you that Phineas Banning actually, who's known as the father of the Port of Los Angeles, built this mansion that's here behind me.
The Bannings came from Wilmington, Delaware. When they landed here, it reminded them a lot of their old town back east. So here we have Wilmington, California.
The mansion, built in 1864, was shut down during World War II to provide military housing, but the community finally succeeded in reopening it to the public as part of Banning Park. The Friends of the Banning Museum now raise money for its upkeep and programs like its Victorian Christmas and summer concert series and the daily museum tours.
You will see some of the original furniture. You will see that was used by Phineas Banning himself, including an 1875 piano. You'll also see period-time clothing of what the kids wore, their games, and of course you will see their kitchen.
And let's not forget those historic hootenannies. Even the barbecue chicken, ribs, and tri-tip made in the open air are history lessons here, along with that big pot of campfire beans. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at ellicityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We leave you with more of the Los Pabladores Walk to mark the city's birthday. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
911 emergency, operator 271.
The city of Los Angeles receives over 2 million 911 calls every year. Hello, I'm Mayor Eric Garcetti.
I'm Chief Charlie Beck. A significant number of 911 calls are not emergencies.
911 should be used for emergency calls, such as preservation of life, a crime in progress, prevention of a crime, or a public hazard.
If your call is not an emergency, such as a loud party, verbal dispute, public nuisance, or lost or missing property, you can dial 1-877-ASK-LAPD to have the police respond.
Remember, call 1-877-ASK-LAPD for non-emergency calls.
Los Angeles Police Department, what are you reporting?
Hi, I'm Kristy Oldham in Los Feliz. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Council members, if you're still in your offices, I need you to make your way to council I'm asking anybody, please clear the aisles and don't stand in front of the podium for any reason until you're called to speak. Thank you. Yeah, the rules are posted in the back of the chambers as well. You can read the ones in the back of the chambers. I'm asking, keep the aisles clear, the center clear, and don't stand at the podium unless Councilmember Buscainos, Sadio, Krikorian, Parks or Price, please make your way to council Sargeant, if you can get the tardy slips ready for detention, I would appreciate it.[1036.58][1036.58](Music) Welcome to Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, September 17, 2014. We are broadcast live on Channel 35 as well. And we are live now. Thank you very much. If we can ask the clerk, please, Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Bloomingfield, Bonner, Buscainos, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Huizar, Corresco, Krikorian, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson. Eleven members present and according, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Sadio moves, Mr. Fuentes seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Labange moves, Ms. Martinez seconds. Members, if I can direct your attention to the agenda, Mr. Clerk, let's run through the agenda.
Very good, sir. Before doing so, the Department, or excuse me, the Office of Finance recommends that Items 2A, C, and D be received and filed inasmuch as the taxpayers have resolved their liabilities. Further, there is a request from member to continue Item 26 to September 26.
Okay, that'll be the order without objection.
Very good, sir. Items one through five are items noticed for public hearing. We do have cards on Items 1, 2, and 4.
Okay, the remaining balance of those items, we'll go ahead and open the roll on Items 3 and 5. Seeing no speakers on the queue, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. President, Items 6 through 16 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Members, any specials? Mr. Huizar.
Please.
Number eight. Any other specials, members? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those balance of the items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, those are moved.
And, Mr. President, Items 17 through 31 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, those items are before us for consideration. We'll open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay. Members, specials on those items? Mr. Labange.
Eighteen.
Eighteen for Mr. Labange. Yes, sir.
You could have, after we go through the agenda, the clerk thank and praise those commissioners who went through unanimously earlier.
Absolutely. And so as soon as we finish the agenda, we'll take the time to do that, and I want to thank them for being here. Actually, they were here on time, so thank you very much. No tardy slips for the commissioners. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, seeing no other specials, do we have cards?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on 17, 19, 23, and 27.
Ms. O'Farrell.
Twenty-eight special, please.
Twenty-eight special for Ms. O'Farrell.
Thank you.
Okay, the balance of those items, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those items are moved. Okay. We'll go ahead and take Items 1 and 2. Herman on Items 1 and 2.
You didn't have those commissioners?
Yes, we'll go ahead and, yes, please, Mr. Labange, yes, of course.
Mr. Clerk, would you please recognize that on those items for the fine Commissioner El Pueblo and the Library Department Human Relations?
That would be Item number six. We have Arts, Parks, Health, Aging, and River Committee report relative to the appointment of Mr. Alan Bernstein to the Disabled Access Appeals Commission. Item number seven was, again, an Arts, Parks, Health, Aging, and River Committee report relative to the appointment of Ms. Josefina Salinas to the Board of Library Commissioners. Item number eight still remains on the board, sir, and Item number 17 is relative to the reappointment of Ms. Lenny Borstein to the Human Relations Commission.
Fantastic. No, thank you for taking the time to do that. Let's give them all a round of applause for their service and dedication to the city of Los Angeles. Thank you so much. Thank you for doing that, Mr. Labange and Mr. Clerk. Okay, Herman, come on up on Items 1 and 2.
Good morning. And yet, one longstanding shaky business has been called liens. Shaky business. And we all heard about what? The liens, $5,169. $16,000 for Groundbreaking Communications LLC. Blue Studios Incorporated, $10,635.98. Enterprise, $38,080.11. Mr. Speaker of the House, are you listening? Mr. Speaker of the House, are you listening?
Yeah, barely. Keep going.
For the liens are objective, they are harassment to the public, for the public's needs and wants are housing. Not a lien in protest, not a lien, Mr. Labange, in protest, but rather, Mr. Coretts, it's about the liens that are not in the appropriations of what the publics are asking. How many times has this gentleman from Building and Safety here has addressed the wrong issue about the liens? And how many times have this predatory action of the city of Los Angeles by Herb Wesson back there drinking his coffee has detrimentized our constituents? And yet, the city attorney laughs willingly because, like you, Mr. Englander, what your lawsuit put to the side now? Again, city thirteen...
If you can't stick to the item, that'll be your only warning, to stick to the item. Do not address particular members of this body, okay? So I'm telling you the rules.
Do you mind not to interrupt?
And I'm letting you know the rules.
Do you mind not to interrupt?
All right? So if you stick to the items...
Now you're engaging with me to violate my rights, my first constitutional right, freedom of speech, freedom of expression, to say that the liens are in violation of due process? The liens are in violation of not this consul shoe responding by letter of certification to acknowledge the provisions of what these people are asking you to do. And that is basically, listen. You don't listen. With big ears as we all have, we don't listen. And when Batman's here talking about all the corruption and scandal, nothing is getting done. So the liens, again, Mr. Speaker, is this: How many times will you affect the lives and impact the lives of those who you do not respond to with the ability, the action of responsibility? And I'm saying it for the record, I want these liens held to the side, and I want these people to come here and represent themselves. I do not want to see the action of the Office of Finance to record the liens for unpaid taxes against these corporations, shock, rom, groundbreaking, Blue Studio, AAZ, Enterprise. I want them to be heard, and I'm gonna ask and demand a louder time so they can be here to represent themselves, because why didn't you notify them? What was your purpose? What was your intent? Contempt of the law, Alan. Tell them, Alan, tell them it's contempt of the law when you put a lien against people who want a home. We don't need the issue of homelessness here, sir. A planetary emergency is needed to correct, cure, correct the action of the illegal liens that you have placed against the citizens of Los Angeles. So again, all of you listening...
Your time is up, thank you very much. Please have a seat. Oh, members, we'll go ahead and take Items 1, 2, and 18 now. Those items are before us, 1, 2, and 18. Mr. Coretts.
I have a question, because as we know, this happens with some frequency where we have these liens on so people can respond if they have a problem with paying them. And yet, we have people that have no standing or involvement with these liens, just using it as a few minutes to get some camera time. Is there any reason why liens, people testifying in these liens cannot be limited to those who are actually having the lien against their property and their representatives? Because there's no purpose in having people speak about the general thoughts on liens. They never touch on the specific lien.
If you're gonna disrupt the meeting, you're gonna be asked to leave the chambers. If you're gonna yell out, or applaud, or hiss, or make noises from the chambers, that'll be your final warning for the meeting.
And this gentleman is still doing this and interrupting me from the audience.
Mr. City Attorney, if you can answer that from Councilmember Craig.
Pursuant to the Brand Act, every item on the agenda that has not had a hearing previous in committee requires public comment, and so there has to be public comment on anybody who submits a card.
But, and it can't be limited to the actual purpose, which is the specific lien, which no one ever testifies about the specific lien that's on there. They never even come close to touching the topic.
If they're way off-topic, then they can be reined in, however, that's interesting exercise.
Well, they'll talk about liens and their philosophy about liens, they never, ever touch the topic of the specific lien and whether it should be applied or not.
Let's go ahead and do this. Let's ask for a further review by the city attorney on specifically your question, and come back with an answer on that later on, because I agree with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chief.
Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, members, I've been working, Mr. President knows, a brief discussion to see if this would be more suited in the Public Works Board as a place where they could get their chance. We do believe in free speech and the comment, but I think Mr. Coretts has a good point. But at the same time, this is the one vehicle, and there may need to be some change in the audits, but we're looking at that, and we got the experts. So we're just looking at it.
No, actually, the council is the body that has to approve them, so they could either be, the hearings could either be conducted at the Public Works Committee or here. If it's conducted at the Board of Public Works, the city council would still have to prove it, and it would still require a public comment.
Got it, but we're looking at it. It's okay, Damon? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, members.
Okay, thank you very much. So on those, Mr. Parks.
I hate to take the time to clarify this, but it appears when we set this up, what most people are failing to realize is that the business and Office of Finance have met numerous times before it came here, and they provided Office of Finance all the material before it becomes a lien. And so this is a step, just like we deal with property in which we go and repair, and they bring liens, this is the same thing. They've met with them, they've eliminated... they bring liens, this is the same thing, they've met with them, they've eliminated their concerns, they've adjusted the costs, they've done everything they can before they get to this process, and this is something the city attorney was very important in developing the process, that these things had to happen, and in fact, they are done so smoothly, they don't even go through committee, they come directly to council. So all the conversation about the poor person is being leaned against, and they have no voice, is not true. All of this has been done through Office of Finance well before it gets here.
That's a great point, and to add to that, Councilmember Parks, the majority of these are public safety-related, building and safety and public safety-related items, and so these are critically important to ensure that safety. So with that, let's go ahead and, yes.
And I just misspoke about the committee, public safety or budget and finance were committees that could be handling these.
Okay, then, as the Chair of Public Safety, we'll go ahead and attempt to do that, we'll move all these to public safety and try to have them agendized. A lot of these are time-sensitive and don't have that ability, but we'll see what we can do to satisfy that request by both Mr. Labonge, Mr. Coretts, and Mr. Parks. With that, we've got items one, two, and eighteen. Before us, councilmembers, we'll go ahead, and Mr. Parks's name is still in the queue, if you can, he's good, if you take his name off the board. And with that, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those three items, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Great, thank you. For the public, if you don't have cards in, now's the time to submit, this'll be the closure of submissions for any items of which you wish to speak. So whatever cards we already have in place, we'll want to finalize the filing of those cards. With that, we'll go ahead and take items seventeen. Seventeen, Herman for seventeen, followed by Jared Carmichael, followed by Juan Akala. Herman, I've called your name already, so I'm gonna start your clock. You pass? Well, I've started your clock, so that was your final minute. So you've lost your minute. Jared Carmichael? Jared?
Good morning.
Good morning to the council, and this is for the appointment of Lenny Borstein to the Human Relations Commission. I would like to, first of all, commend on the appointment, as one who knows of life's ups and downs. I would also like to quickly take this time out to point out that I have actually an HBO comedy special coming out on October 4th at 10:00 PM. And with that said, I would also like to say that Ms. Borstein, that those ups and downs are, you know, both recognized by me and understood, and a huge congratulations. Thank you very much. Once again, HBO, October 4th, thank you.
Thank you very much. Juan, you have cards on seventeen, twenty-seven. Seventeen and twenty-seven.
This is covering both items? Okay. On both items, my sincere opinion is that it really doesn't matter much who you elect to what board, to what place, because you all play the same game. You're all in cahoots with each other, and you all tend to agree as a team, so it really doesn't matter who the people elect, actually, because you all elect each other. Basically, there is no democracy.
If you can stick to the item, please.
Yeah, I'm talking about how you elect your public officials here, your board. On the other one, vacation proceedings for the alley extending from, all the alleys look like shit around LA. If you, if you're right around the alleys, they're full of rats, full of roaches, there is people, homeless people laying in the alleys because they got no place else to go. This city is a piece of crap, it really is, and there's no way to fix it, because what do you do? You all play with each other, and you all give each other big salaries, and you all keep thinking that the people are nothing, you know?
Mr. President, he is not talking about either item.
Okay, that was your, that was your second warning, you're not talking about either of the items, so, okay, that'll be, you're not, you weren't on the items.
Yeah, one of the alleys, but all of the alleys are the same way. So anyway, on seventeen, yeah, go ahead and put anybody in office, it doesn't matter if it's this person or anybody else, because it's all the same game. You're all playing Monopoly here, and the people are getting screwed, that's what's happening. And it is not only here in LA, it's in every city in the world, it isn't just here. The people have not, the people have not actually been able to shake the government that they supposedly elect. Anyway.
Mr. President, he is still not talking about these items.
Okay, that was, again, your final warning on that, so, we'll go ahead and dismiss your time now, that's four warnings on that, but I will ask you this, stay there for a moment. I will ask you, Mr. Akala, we, you filled out a card on twenty-eight. This is a tragic incident for a reward motion, and I will let you know that the family is here in council chambers, and still ask you if you, oftentimes, you waive the opportunity to speak on that item when the family's here, but I will ask you, it's up to you.
Well, I'm sorry for the family.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, we'll file your card, I appreciate that. Okay, so with that, we do have one more card on item twenty-seven, Jared Carmichael?
Hello again, it's me, Gerard Carmichael. In relation to the initiating street vacation proceedings for the alley, I do have questions of why that would be. I'm not really sure exactly what purpose that would serve, you know, the street vaca- could that be further explained by anyone here, or? No, it couldn't. Well, I would also like to take this time out to let you know that I do have a special coming out on-
He is not talking about this item.
Well, no, sorry, but, well, it is in relation to the alleyway, there are a lot of people in that alley that don't have HBO, and I do think that perhaps any maintenance or anything we could do, you're right, this isn't about the alley, but-
Well, it's gotta be about the specific item, if you want to fill out a speaker card for any general item, that's for general public comment.
When is the general?
As soon as we're done with the agenda.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you very much, sir.
October 4th, thank you very much, thank you.
And Jared Carmichael, while you're still, let me ask you, while you're walking away, Jared, you had a card on nineteen as well, did you just want to wait till general public comment? You got it, no problem, fantastic. Okay, so we have items seventeen and twenty-seven are now before us. Sorry, seventeen, nineteen, let's try that again, seventeen, seventeen and twenty-seven are before us, so we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, so called special, we'll bring up number eighteen for Mr. Labonge, called special by Mr. Labonge.
Ms. Duckett, if you would please be seated there, this is one of our, Mr. Garcetti's commissioners on our Convention Center, and I wanted to coldly just say a few words, we had a great meeting where we came up with a lot of good ideas. Ms. Duckett, please.
Sure, first, thank you all very much for allowing me to continue serving on the Board for the Convention Center, I'm very excited about a lot of the work that we're doing right now, we're working on the Expansion and Futurization Plan, which was previously called Plan B and is now called the Expansion and Futurization Plan, and we're being led by Bud Overham, who has amazing ideas on hotel expansion, not just to put more heads in beds and increase the economic growth of the city, but also to help raise us along with our competitors. And we've got Ernie Wooden, head of LA Tourism that we're working closely with now, he has fantastic experience that, again, is helping us increase tourism.
Let me, I don't want to interrupt you, but I, actually, I do, for one second.
Okay.
Just as a matter of protocol, I want to go ahead and make sure that we get you on the record on this as well.
Sure.
Colleagues before us, for reconsideration, will be number eighteen, so it was cleared off the board for whatever reason, so technical difficulties. So that vote for reconsideration on nineteen is before us, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
The floor is yours again, sorry about that, thank you.
So now I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to continue to serve on the Board of the Convention Center, and as I was saying, there's such important work that we're doing right now, working with AEG, we're so happy to have them as part of our management team now. And in addition to the Expansion and Futurization Plan, we're also working with LAX and with transportation, we understand how important it is to set the stage, the minute that our visitors get to the city, and then to continue that throughout their visit by having seamless transportation. And I was talking about Ernie Wooden, because with LA Tourism, we're really focusing on international business, which we know is so important here in LA, both because of our location on the Pacific Rim, but also because of the rich cultural diversity of our city. And I'd like to close with the notion of cultural tourism, it's something that's so important to me, to the Convention Center. Councilmember Price is doing great work in this area. And lastly, I'm so proud to let you all know that pursuant to Councilmember Labonge's recommendation, I will be serving as a liaison between the Convention Center and the sister cities, which will only help me do further service for the City of LA. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Congratulations, thank you. Fourth with, fourth with without objection, that'll be the order, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Number eight, we'll go ahead and take number eight for Mr. Huisar.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Mr. Louis, can you come up real quick and to the table? And colleagues, I just wanted to introduce you to Mr. David Louis, who has been on the El Pueblo Commission for some time. He has been one of the most active commissioners on this commission, I wanted to first thank him for that. As you know, El Pueblo is going under tremendous transformation from getting some long-term leases done for El Pueblo to working an Italian ha with Mr. Buscagino. I just want to hear a yes from Mr. Buscagino, I like the way you say that, and also looking for ways to continue to promote the authenticity of El Pueblo, but allow it to move forward to attract more visitors. But what I found from Mr. Louis is he's been one of the most thoughtful ones, one that takes his job seriously, is not just a commissioner for being a commissioner's sake, but really reads everything, discusses everything, and wants to have a thorough vetting of all issues. And not only that, but you really have come up with some great ideas to present to us, say, hey, councilmember, hey, El Pueblo Administration, why don't we do this or that and that? So I wanted to thank you for your commitment, and I know you've also have done something to help El Pueblo, which is to help continue and expand and support the connection of El Pueblo with a Chinese-American museum. We have a long history of Chinese-Americans in the area and in El Pueblo with a Chinese-American museum, et cetera, and that connection has been very critical and important to all of us to realize that although we are one of the most diverse cities in the world at this moment, we started as a very diverse city. So thank you, Mr. Louis, and anything you want to share with the council, you're welcome to do it now, thank you.
Councilman Huisar, thank you very much, and thank you to the council members and the mayor for the reappointment to the El Pueblo Historic Monument Authority. El Pueblo, as you know, is the birthplace of Los Angeles, it really is a celebration of the tapestry of diversity within the city. It is a crown jewel that is going through a process of being shined up, and I want to be a part of that, so thank you to you, Jose, Joe, thank you, Tom, Tom has played an important part, and Mitch, of course, have all been very important to the progress that we've made at El Pueblo, so thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much. Seeing no other speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll on your appointment, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Unanimous, congratulations, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your service to the City of Los Angeles, thank you, thank you. All right, with that. Okay, Mr. Coretts, for a presentation.
Mr. President and colleagues, on September 9th, I was joined by councilmembers Blumenfield, Englander, Huisar and Krikorian in submitting the City of Peace Resolution, adding Los Angeles to a growing worldwide network of cities that have done the same. I'm joined this morning by Dr. Vicky Raydel and Katie Butler, representing Peace Now, which is sponsoring this effort to gather 1 billion signatures around the globe in an effort to mobilize everyone to embrace the always necessary message of peace. Mr. Scotty Brewer, who I introduced to you when he was here at the chambers on September 9th, is currently in Korea to promote the same resolution we are celebrating today. These tremendous individuals are here today to promote the International Cities of Peace Resolution.
If I can ask, there's a lot of sidebar conversation, and if we can ask staff to keep the voices down, this is a very important presentation, so I appreciate it, if we can keep it down a little bit in council chambers, and, no, no, please don't applaud, thank you very much.
They also have been traveling around the world in an attempt to reach the 1 billion signature goal on their petition. This project seeks to provide life-changing lessons in our methods to cultivate peace within our hearts, our homes and our communities, promotes the creation of departments of peace internationally, issues peace business certifications that recognize businesses that contribute to the world peace effort, and provides training of military and civilian personnel who administer post-war reconstruction and demobilization in war-torn societies. In addition to asking everyone here to sign our petition, they're also here to encourage everyone in Los Angeles to attend the Los Angeles Day of Peace Festival to be held this Sunday, September 21st, in Venice, where it'll be my distinct privilege and pleasure to read this resolution to all of those who will be gathered. I'd like to ask Dr. Raydel to make a few remarks and to accept this resolution on behalf of Peace Now and its supporters on every continent.
Thank you, we are both humbled and honored to be here today, and on behalf of the founder of Peace Now, Scotty Brewer, we accept this resolution and are so proud to know that Los Angeles is now joining in the leagues with The Hague, Toronto, Hiroshima, Nagasaki and New York City to become an official international city of peace, with sincere gratitude.
And now, on behalf of the city council, it's my honor to present this resolution declaring the City of Los Angeles a city of peace.
Fantastic, thank you, let's give them all a round of applause, thank you. It was very important, appreciate that. Sean, come on up, you've got cards on items four, nineteen and twenty-three.
Yes, good morning, Sean. Item four I support-
Yes, good morning, Sean. Item four I support. Item 23, no. That's, thank you.
Great. That was 19 as well. Okay, thank you very much. And on items 29, we have, and item four, Mark, here. I don't know who you are, but I'm asking for Mark. He's not here, so you're out of time. So, okay, Mark, we'll go ahead and file your cards. Thank you very much. If you can have a seat and clear, keep the center aisle clear, Mr. Herman, once again. Okay, we'll go ahead and take item four, item 19, 23, and 29. Four, 19, 23, and 29 are before us. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Great, thank you very much. Since we have a, a stack of general public comment cards, and, and it's over, well over the allotted time of 15 minutes, what we'd like to do is we do want to give everybody an opportunity to speak and get through these. So we're going to go ahead, because it goes over, and we've got more coming in. So since, since it goes over the time, and I'd like to give everybody an opportunity to speak, we're going to go ahead and, and put a minute on the clock. And if we can ask Carl Kleins to come up, followed by, and if I could have the speakers line up before the second set of ropes, Carl, followed by Sean, followed by Herman, followed by Brian Barajas, and then followed by Richard Eastman. Sir, good afternoon, good morning. Thank you very much.
Are you ready for me now?
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay. My name is, my name is Carl Kleins. I'm here about taxation without representation. I'm the owner of the oldest, most professional medical marijuana collective in the city of Los Angeles, at 122 South Lincoln Boulevard in Venice. I'm in my 10th year at the same location, and me to exceed the criteria implemented by you, the city council, including the certified 1,000-foot radius check. There were no pot shops, schools, churches, daycare centers, nothing sensitive within that radius. Today, there are numerous illegal pot shops more every day. They follow no rules, pay no taxes, sell Mexican cartel weed that's grown all over California on state and federal land, creating a violent environment and destroying the ecosystem on millions of otherwise pristine acres. They chop down trees, leave poison animal carcasses for other smaller animals to feed on and die, defecate, urinate on the ground. Not only is that unsanitary, but devastating to local wildlife that survive by using their scent. They allow chemical fertilizers to run off and saturate the soil, contaminating it for many years to come. As a documentary filmmaker, working for years with the DEA, I've personally seen this exact scenario unfold in South America with devastating effects. I'm telling you this because you're partially responsible. You've created a free-for-all environment in Los Angeles.
Okay, thank, thank you, sir. Yeah, no, yours, your, your time is, but thank, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Yeah, no, that was, yes, thank you so much. Sean?
It's so cool in the chambers. I don't want to get out of here. I mean, it's hot outside. We need to keep our streets clean, our trees trimmed. They're trimming my trees in Laurel Canyon Apartments right now. Saw the guys this morning. Thank you. KFWB made radio history early this month. It's all sports now. You ever, you tune to KFWB lately?
Herman?
It's Mr. Herman, for the record, sir. Planetary emergency we Americans now face, and that's you listening in this building, Secretary of the State and Eric Garcetti. Planetary emergency for one longstanding, it has been called unsustainable employment, unsustainable development, which means promoting economic and very little social growth within the planet for jobs, for the homeless population, of people that you have discouraged and removed. So I call out to you, Mr. Secretary of the State, the U.S. Congress, and every one of you here listening today, this is the discriminatory action of this horseshoe to violate your rights, First Amendment rights, and you violated my rights earlier on the brown neck when you took my card away, Mr. Big Ears. You get it?
Thank you. You're out of time. Sit down. Thank you very much. You're done for the day. Sir, if we could, we're going to call you back up. We're going to go ahead and go to, back to the agenda for another item. So if you could just have a seat for a minute. Brian, you too. Thank you very much. I'm going to turn the floor over to Councilmember Mitchell Farrell. Colleagues, if we can please have quiet in the council chambers for this, shh, for this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues...
Do not clap. I'm going to ask you, that's your final, that is, you're disrupting the meeting. I'll ask you to leave if you do that again.
And, Mr. President, this is item 28, called Special, for Councilmember O'Farrell.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, it's, this is yet another, another time where another one of us stands up here to involve the public in helping us and helping a family who lost a member as a result of a hit-and-run collision that resulted in loss of life for a constituent in the 13th District. Standing with me, we have Detective Martha Dominguez, who is working on the case. We have family members of Mr. Javier Hernandez, who lost his life on July 28th. We have, we have his brother-in-law, Pasqual Martinez, another family member, Francisco Martinez, his sister, Socorro Hernandez, his niece, Estela Hernandez. And so here are the facts. On July 28th, at 6:40 a.m., Mr. Hernandez, who was born in 1968, and two other people were struck by a vehicle while waiting for a bus to stop at the corner of Beverly and Normandy in the Koreatown neighborhood. The driver of the vehicle, who had run a red light and struck two vehicles before hitting the pedestrians at the bus stop, left without rendering, rendering aid. The moment he left the scene, it became a hit-and-run crime. Mr. Hernandez was pronounced dead at the scene, and the two other victims were critically injured and taken to the hospital. We believe this reward will compel members of the public to provide information on the whereabouts of the suspect in this crime. Just a few really sad statistics. In 2012, we had 99 pedestrians killed by motor vehicle in the city of Los Angeles. The latest I could find in terms of the hit-and-run percentage was, was going back a number of years to '09. Forty-eight percent of collisions, traffic collisions, forty-eight percent, almost half at that time, were hit-and-run, with a high percentage of those being victims struck by a car. So what I would say to society in general is, what kind of society are we, where we allow that, where we allow any, just anyone, from being left to die after being hit by a car? And I would implore the public to get involved. If you've seen or heard anything about this incident or any other incident, and we've been up here many, many times in the last 14 and a half months since I've been on the city council, we really, really need to be better as a society, and we need everyone to pitch in and give information when these types of tragedies, these types of crimes occur in our great city. At this time, I would like for Detective Dominguez to give some details of this crime. Detective?
Thank you.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Officer Martha Dominguez, working LAPD West Traffic Detectives. And I am humbly here to request the approval of the monetary reward from the council. We have been able to identify the hit-and-run suspect, but unfortunately, he is still at large. And this is why we are requesting the reward, so that it stimulates the public to come forward and provide us with information as to where his whereabouts may be, so that we can effect an arrest and give the families of the victim some justice and closure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Detective Dominguez. And now, a representative from the family, and this is Mr. Hernandez's brother-in-law, Mr. Pasqual Martinez.
Buenos dias. El 28 de julio de este año fue asesinado injustamente.
Can we have the interpreter?
One moment.
On July 28th of this year...
Mi cunado Javier Hernandez...
My brother-in-law Javier Hernandez was...
Fue asesinado injustamente.
Was murdered unjustly.
Mientras esperaba el autobús...
While he was waiting for the bus.
Por un conductor...
By a driver.
Que huyó en ese lugar de los hechos.
That ran away from the place of the injury.
Fue el que causó el trágico muerte de mi cunado.
He's the one that caused a tragic accident, the tragic death of my brother-in-law.
A causa, a causa de ese trágico accidente...
Because of that tragic accident.
Su esposa y sus dos hijos se han quedado desamparados.
His wife and his two children are, by themselves, alone.
Ellos necesitan ayuda.
They need help.
Porque era, era la cabecilla del, del mantenimiento de sus hijos, de su familia.
Because he was the one, the sole provider of the family, the childrens of the family.
Y necesita mucha ayuda y es todo lo que nosotros pedimos. Muchas gracias.
And he needs a lot of help, and that is all we request. Thank you so much.
So colleagues, as has been said, we need anyone with any information and knowledge about the person responsible for this crime to step forward, because as long as that person is at large, hopefully they have a conscience, but perhaps their conscience is compromised. They pose a threat to the general public otherwise. So I ask for an "I" vote on this motion, providing an offer of reward for information leading to the identification, apprehension, and conviction of the person or persons responsible for the hit-and-run collision that killed Mr. Hernandez. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And before we vote, on behalf of the entire city council in the city of Los Angeles, our hearts go to the families, and we urge the public to get involved. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That was passed. I'm on behalf of the family as well as Councilmember O'Farrell. We'll send that forth with without objection as well. Thank you.
Mr. Brian Barajas? Let Brian come now. You're right after that.
Yesterday, I announced an 8 p.m. conference call on Thursdays. Today, I wanted to announce a 6 p.m. on the same day on Thursday. 424-203-8000, code 142565Pound. This Thursday, this 6 o'clock, is going to be crucial, because Helga Zep LaRouche, the wife of Linda LaRouche, came back from a trip to China, where she was interviewed by a national television called CCTV. The reason why this phone call, and people should call in, is because when you're dealing with the collapse of society, you have to understand how to uplift everything. The problem is, is that I think people have to realize, is that when you're dealing with the issue of, you know, people dying, you have to realize the only way to subsume that is if you do your role and duty as a citizen for this republic.
Now, Richard Eastman. Thank you, Richard.
City Council, Tom Labonge, the new council people, Richard Eastman, in L.A. since 1976. And I'm one of the founders of medical marijuana, living with AIDS for 20 years. And I lost by two votes to Mitchell Farrell. And ultimately, Jay-Z and the mayor had Budweiser and 35,000 people smoking pot. Well, I'm proposing to the city of Los Angeles that next year, in 2015, they give me a permit for a free event in front of City Hall with no beer and lots of weed. The downtown news said there was a lot of marijuana at Jay-Z's event. They charged a lot of money. My event is going to be free, and we're going to educate people about medical marijuana, and we're going to have a hemp festival. And L.A. will not compete with Seattle, but we are going to have L.A.'s first marijuana hemp festival, produced by Richard Eastman, one of the founders of medical marijuana in my beautiful city, Los Angeles, where I saved the Hollywood sign. And thank you, Tom Labonge, for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Eastman. Carl Williams, Carl Williams?
Good morning. This is directed to Mr. Mike Bunin. We want to know why you are racist towards black people and why you keep on harassing us, the vendor of Venice Beach, California, for no apparent reason. We dare try to make an honest living. Every time you pass a new ordinance, it's always pertaining towards the black vendor and not towards the Hispanic vendor, or the Caucasian, or the Asian vendor. They have the right to do whatever they want. The things that they display come right here from downtown, from China, Mexico, Korea. But you allow them to display their items and make money, and you put it in the ordinance, nothing that the blacks display to be, to be there. Just go ahead and say, we don't want no nigger, black niggers, in Venice Beach.
Morning Star? Is there someone named Morning Star here? Mr. Clerk, for the file. Is your name Morning Star? State your name.
Mark, Dave, Mark Morningstar. And, you guys, I think, oh, shit, sorry, sorry. Totally blanked. Sorry about that.
Thank you very much. Bevis? Yeah, come on up, Bevis.
Yes, sir.
And help me pronounce your last name correctly.
Bevis Igbinaba.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, everybody. Okay, okay, thank you. Good morning, everybody. I'm a vendor in Venice Beach. What we're trying to say that why every time there's a new ordinance, they always harass Africa American. And again, the state of California said, we, we vendors, we have right, if we are acquiring the state board of equalization and tax, business tax license, then we can stay in Venice Beach to say, by next year in February, if we are filing a tax income, or we tell them the police are harassing us, they will say, the police don't have no right to harass us. We have to pay the tax. We trying to ask you the theory, what can we do? Like, every one of you sitting down there now, you are making money, but we not making money. How can we feed our family? How can we feed ourselves?
One, I call her?
I am here to say that you take a lot of actions against the people. The people are the ones that pay your salaries. You are the highest-paid political body in the nation. Why in the hell are you harassing the vendors in Venice Beach? They need to make a living. Why are you harassing all the homeless around the city? They can no longer afford rent. Why do you run such a stupid city? Why do you run such a stupid city? Who the hell are you? You elect each other, you go to Sacramento, you come back, you go to Washington, you come back, you go everywhere and you come back, and all you do is harass people everywhere. What the hell happened to democracy? It was never here, the system was set up completely wrong. We need to revamp it.
Mark Hurd, please, Mark Hurd, H-E-A-R-D, we note that file. Next, Donna Bruhana, San Diego, California.
Hello, thank you, thank you for letting me speak today. I've heard a lot of people talk today, and I didn't plan to be here today. Today is S17, the third-year anniversary of the Occupy Wall Street movement in New York City. I was supposed to be in Zuccotti Park today, but I was not allowed on the plane and was hassled because I'm an occupier, a peaceful protester, standing for the civil rights and for justice and equality for all. I grew up in Los Angeles, and one of the things that really warmed my hearts is to see Crips and Bloods shake hands and provide security for Occupy LA. What we saw three years ago beginning was just a miraculous beginning of unity. This system is going down, and I know that many of the officers in this police department are quite unsatisfied with what they've been asked to do. The people will join together as the 99%, we will unite, there will be unity, and we are not a democracy, Princeton says that we are an oligarchy.
Melissa Ballen.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonge, it would, it would seem that none of the city council is here to hear my public comment, so I hope that you'll share with the others, is anybody here besides you? Mr. Wesson?
Just keep talking, Mr. Wesson, we're all here.
Okay, I really appreciate your time, I'm Melissa Ballen, I'm not actually a visitor, I actually changed my address to Spring Street here at City Hall on October 12th, when you approved our resolution to support Occupy Los Angeles. Today, I speak in solidarity for Occupy Wall Street, it is S17, and I'd like to let you all know that you're under citizens' arrest, LA City Council, but I'm allowing you to remain on your own recognizance until the marshals can properly indict you. Please check with the city attorney, these are felonious charges for your submersion of perjury, and the known new evidence that has come to light, that you planned a grave breach of the Geneva Convention against your peaceful protesters.
Thank you very. Nicole Vandell, from Palm Springs, California.
Thank you for being in these chambers at this time. Thank you for returning to chambers as we, the people, in order to form a more perfect union, know very well that unless ropes are used in the bedroom, they better not touch my body again, and that the Sergeant-at-Arms and his men have no permission to ever lay a finger on my body as my daughter wants to go to Westwood, to UCLA, and I suggest that we stand down our police immediately.
Last speaker today, Michael Hunt, Michael Hunt.
Yes, we're back here again, because we've been sold out for contractors, all blacks, all African-Americans have been sold out again by our great Mike Bonin, which the law is unconstitutional in each and every way. They want me to file another lawsuit, I'm hoping that I don't have to, that sensible people do sensible things at sensible times. I just really hope that we wake up and stop giving away the money, and let the African-American people work, that's all it's about, is jobs, 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 more jobs, and more jobs, and more jobs, not discrimination, not discrimination, not it's just one kind that can't work, oh, thank you.
Okay, that completes public comment today. Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referrals.
So ordered, next item.
The desk is clear.
Any announcements, members, any announcements at this time? Any adjourned motions at this time, members? See no adjourned motions, continue to serve the city well, this meeting is adjourned, and we thank our staff, the clerks, sergeants-at-arms, especially the city clerk's office, continue to serve the city well, thank you.